And to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Alice Norris, the mayor.
Doug Neely, commission president.
James Nacito, commissioner.
Rocky Smith, commissioner.
Daphne West, commissioner.
The first thing we have this evening is a proclamation, which mayors are fond of doing, and they announce very important things, and this one is no different. Whereas culture draws us together in common purpose, understanding, and celebration; and whereas Oregon's 1,300 arts, heritage, and humanities nonprofits, museums, libraries, theaters, historical societies, arts centers, and heritage sites are the heart of our communities; and whereas the Oregon Cultural Trust presents Oregon Days of Culture, October 1 through 8, during National Arts and Humanities Month, to encourage Oregonians to celebrate, participate, and give to Oregon culture; and whereas October 8, 2010, marks the 8th anniversary of Oregon's innovative cultural tax credit, encouraging new public and private investment in Oregon culture; and whereas the Oregon Cultural Trust is now smart public policy, like vote by mail, the bottle and beach bills, that make Oregon a proud thought leader nationwide; and whereas supporting culture by giving to cultural nonprofits and to the Oregon Cultural Trust is vital to preserving the past, sustaining the present, and creating the future. Now therefore, I, Alice Norris, mayor of the City of Oregon City, do proclaim October 1 through 8, 2010, to be Oregon Days of Culture, and call upon Oregonians, especially during that eight-day week, and you only have two left, to participate in Oregon culture, to celebrate its vibrancy and depth, and to give to the arts, heritage, and humanities, to ensure their future vitality. As part of Cultural Trust, or Humanities Month, and Cultural Trust Week, the Cultural Coalition is asking us to make cultural confessions. If anyone is willing to make a cultural confession, I believe our city manager might have a cultural confession. Would that be true?
Well, I own four guitars, and I can kind of play them, depending on who you ask.
All at once?
One at a time.
A very good confession. Does anyone else have one?
Oh, I guess I do.
Okay.
I've been participating in the Antique Fair for several years, and I'm there early in the morning, and usually sing "Oh What a Beautiful Morning" to get everybody looking up.
Oh, my! Did you want to do some now?
Sometimes it tarzan, yeah.
My cultural confession is that theater is my favorite thing. That's not a confession. That's well-known, I think. But I did star with Whoopi Goldberg and Jim Belushi when they made that famous movie Homer and Eddie in Oregon City, and I was actually not paid as a regular extra. I was called a talented extra because I was able to wear a yellow raincoat, march, and twirl an umbrella while playing a kazoo, all at the same time.
Oh.
I stood on the side of the road and ate popcorn.
Any more cultural confessions?
My ancestral town in Sicily has its 15 minutes of fame in the movie The Godfather. It is called Savoca, S-A-V-O-C-A, and it is the town in which Francis Ford Coppola filmed this famous wedding reception scene in the town square.
Oh, nice. Okay.
It's not Corleone, but it is in the movie.
We have a guest this evening. Phil Reyes here from Clackamas County Cultural Coalition. Did you want to say a word, since you came all the way from Estacada? Yes, please. You need to come to the microphone, and you can introduce yourself if you'd like to do it differently.
Good evening, Mayor Norris, and thank you for your proclamation. I'm currently a member of the Clackamas County Cultural Coalition, and we want to thank the Oregon Cultural Trust for funds that come through the Clackamas County Cultural Coalition. This year's awardees will be receiving about $32,000, and they will go to individuals and small arts organizations, such as the Estacada Library Foundation. And the Skip a Week Club is a little club, quilting club, in Estacada that has actually been quilting every other week or so since 1928. And they received funding about two or three years ago, and they were extremely overwhelmed by the generous support from the Cultural Trust through the county-administered program. And my opera confession also involves my wife, Loretta, in the fact that my cultural confession is, even though I've been very active in Indian affairs throughout my career, we are both very strong advocates and supporters of opera, and it's truly an art form that we truly enjoy, and hopefully can come to Oregon City and the Clackamas area sometime. So, thank you, and your proclamation is very well-appreciated.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And you do have time still to donate to your favorite arts, humanities, or cultural organization, and then get an Oregon tax credit for the Cultural Trust. So, it's a really wonderful way to spend your money. Next, we're moving to citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak to us for three minutes, up to three minutes, on items that are not listed on the agenda. First is William Gifford. While William's coming, just for all of you, if you come to speak to us, please give your name and the city in which you reside. You do not need to give us your full address, if you've written legibly.
My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City, and I had three things to talk about. That ant doesn't count. And I think that I'm speaking with my secretary of the CIC hat on. One is I wanted to inform the listening public that Monday night at 7 o'clock at the Abernathy Center, the CIC is hosting a candidate's forum for the mayor and two council positions for the city. That starts at 7 o'clock at Abernathy Center this Monday night, the 11th. The second thing is I wanted to point out that the CIC has been very actively reactivating neighborhoods, as I think you all are aware, and we're proud of that history. Next week, on October 14, we are having a reactivation meeting of the Gaffney Lane Association. That'll be very nice to get another one back in the fold, and we'll be meeting at 7 o'clock at the Berry Hill Retirement Center. So, that's next Thursday. And I don't know if anyone's going to mention it later in their reports, that I believe October is Fire Prevention Awareness Month, and I just want to make sure that people keep the importance of keeping their homes safe, especially this month. Thank you.
Thank you, William. Okay. I see no further citizen comment. Move on to the agenda. As you look at the agenda, is there anything anyone needs reordered? On the consent agenda, it's a request to pull off item 8E.
8E, I believe. Maybe. I think it's 8E.
It's 8E, the transportation funding. Any other requests? Not, we will take the agenda in the order in which it is listed, which means that we will begin with a public hearing. This is Introduction of an Ordinance Number 10-1008. It's a comprehensive plan amendment designation changing from future urban designation to mixed-use corridor designation, and a zone change from County FU10 to MUC1 mixed-use corridor, and this involves a 9.6-acre parcel of land located along Beaver Creek Road. We discussed this at our work session, and this is the first time for a public hearing. We will begin with a report from city staff, and then open a public hearing following that.
Thank you, Meta-Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and commissioners.
This is Pete Walter for our planning staff.
Yeah, thank you. We had a hearing on September 15, a public hearing, to introduce this ordinance, and the applicant is seeking a zone change and a comprehensive plan amendment from the comprehensive plan amendment designation of MUC corridor. And that would be the proposed comprehensive plan, and the zoning change from FU10, which is future urban holding, to mixed-use corridor. We discussed the conditions of approval related to future development of the site, particularly with respect to compliance with the Oregon transportation planning rule, and we recommended the conditions of approval for the time of development. The commission decided to continue the public hearing to allow additional comment. As of this time, we do not have any additional written comments from the public, but the applicant has submitted a letter into the record, which I'll briefly summarize for your review. And this letter addresses the issue of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, which at this time has not been formally adopted. And in order to achieve the vision of the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan Mixed Employment Village, the applicant has agreed to the following additional conditions of approval, or condition of approval. Basically, if the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan is formally adopted subsequent to approval of this rezoning, the applicant would comply with the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan and any design and performance standards adopted thereto. If the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan is not yet adopted at the time of development, the applicant's proposal is to be consistent with the intent of the Mixed Employment Village, to be transit-supportive in its use, mix, density, and design, and at a minimum have an overall average minimum floor area ratio of .25, and a minimum building height of 25 feet or two stories, except for accessory structures or buildings under 1,000 square feet. This is to ensure that the area will be developed in a high-density fashion that is supportive of mixed use and transit. And that is part of the additional written record. It is not new evidence, because it deals with the items that have already been discussed in the staff report. The third issue in the applicant's, the third item the applicant proposes is a discussion of how minimum floor area is, floor area ratio is calculated, and that is directly from the Oregon City Municipal Code. And what that ensures that at build-out of the site, the minimum floor area ratio will be met. So, that would allow an applicant to build one building that might not quite meet that floor area ratio, except that there would be a binding legal mechanism, either through phasing or other document, that will ensure that that FAR is met at the time of build-out. So, that is the only other exhibit we have entered into the record. If you have any additional questions, which I haven't covered in this recap, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions before we go into the public hearing? Commissioner Neely?
This weekend, I was asked by a resident that was close to there, expressing concern that this would be a mall. I don't think that was at all the intention of the concept plan, and I felt that it would basically serve the businesses, the industry, and the residents in the area, as opposed to being a destination mall. Based on that, I think the person was less concerned about the project, but I believe I'm correct.
Yeah, the intent of the Mixed Employment Village portion of the plan, it designates that site and that area, which will have the Myers Road extension on it, as being very pedestrian-friendly, transit-supportive, and it talks about that in some detail in the plan. Not only would it go through site plan and design review, but if we adopt some performance standards and design guidelines for that area subsequent to adoption, those will apply. And I'm sure that with our latest code revisions, it will be reflective of not only the MUC1 zone, but also the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan.
Okay, thank you. We're now then ready to go into our public hearing, and I need to, I'm required to say that this hearing will be governed by Oregon State statutes as well as Oregon City Municipal Code. And I'll ask our attorney to walk us through the required questions.
This is probably fairly familiar to the commission by now. Two questions to ask the commission. I understand Commissioner Neely already indicated that there was at least one ex-party contact. You might want to elaborate on what that contact was, and if anybody else has had an ex-party contact, now's the time to talk about it.
It was a person that I just happened to run into and asked me questions about it. The questions, in fact, were ones the concern that that individual expressed, and I tried to indicate to him that what he was concerned about was probably not what was going to happen at the site.
As I mentioned before, I'm an employee at Oregon State High School. I was at a meeting on Monday night for Safe Routes to School meeting, and a question was asked in that meeting about the property across the street from the high school. There was no discussion about any substance, other than I just mentioned to the group that it was going to be before the commission this evening.
Now's the time for the audience. If the audience wants to ask either Commissioner Neely or Commissioner Smith about their contacts, seeing none, any other change in the bias or financial interest in the outcome from any commissioner? Okay. Everybody's nodded no. I'm obliged to inform the audience that the standards for these proceedings are laid out in the staff report, which is available publicly. If anybody wants me to read those standards, I'd be glad to do so. Testimony or other evidence must be directed at those standards, or any other standard that the testifier believes applicable, and failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow other parties or the city commission to respond to that testimony will effectively cause a waiver of that issue before the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're ready to go into the public hearing. We will allow 15 minutes for the applicant to present the case. That will be followed by a public testimony. Does he actually know? That's not correct, is it? Followed by the, who's doing that? The city?
The applicant starts.
The applicant starts.
And then anybody in favor of the presentation?
Right, okay. That's what I thought. I was thinking there was another presentation. Okay. And then public testimony will follow that. So, please, if you have not filled out a card, it would be good for you to give that to our city recorder, so we can get you on schedule. So, and again, I mentioned, when you come up, please give your name and the city in which you reside. So, public leaders of neighborhood associations may speak to us for five minutes, and we hope the rest of you that are speaking can keep your testimony to three minutes or under, and you self-monitor here. So, I will open the public hearing. South African, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the commission. My name is Jeff Kleiman, Portland, Oregon. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Merrill Wood, LLC. And to my left is Phil Geneman from Merrill Wood, LLC, who testified last time. We're going to be very brief. Phil can answer some of the questions that you might have. We also have with us again Phil Worth, our traffic engineer, who worked on the impact analysis from Kittleson and Associates. He's behind me, as is Bruce Goldson from Theta Engineering, the consultant on this application. Phil Geneman has been involved in this process for so long that I think there's been an inevitable falloff in perspective, and I would like to present, in my own words, a frame of reference for this application, why it's before you, and what's intended by it. Phil and his company have been quality builders in both Oregon City and Westland for 30 years. Phil is not a strip mall developer. That's not what he does. And in point of fact, he participated very actively in the task force that developed the concept plan that went up to Lubbock, and is before you now on remand, but hasn't been adopted. But actively involved, highly supportive of the concept plan and the intent and values behind it, with the idea that development would then occur on the subject property of nine-plus acres, totally consistently with what had been worked on and adopted by the city. The reason that this application for the plan amendment and zone change is before you now, and may appear to some to be overeager, even though this has dragged on for years now, but that's, Phil was happy to live with that. Merrill Wood was happy to live with that for however long it took. But there is a significant problem that cropped up that I think Phil is a little too shy to directly state, and it's this. There is a lender on the property. At this point, the lender has taken a firm position that if zoning sufficient to allow development is not obtained, then the lender will foreclose and take the property back. At that point, there's a bank involved rather than a local developer with an active interest in carrying out the concept plan. So, the only reason that this had to go forward when it did was not that there's an urgent need on the part of Merrill Wood to develop right now and jump the line, as it were, but that if we can't put the zoning on the property, then we lose it, and we have a very disinterested bank in a world in which the banks now own too much residential and commercial property. With, you know, it's totally apathetic as far as the cities and the citizens' interests are concerned. So, we want to keep the property, and the only way we can do that and proceed is by at least getting the zoning on it. Now, what we've done, because there has been a concern expressed last time about how this all ties together in terms of timing, and what happens if a development application is presented before the concept plan is re-adopted and implemented, we've tried to deal with that through this three-part condition of approval that came before you tonight. And I think Pete did a very good, clear job explaining it. The derivation in Part 2 of the FAR .25 is that the MUC1 zone that we've applied for doesn't have an FAR requirement at this point. So, the closest thing is the minimum of .25 that's set out in your MUC2 zone. And we've used definition in Sub 3 for calculating the FAR that I think gives the city maximum flexibility in applying this criteria, and which I understand has never been applied in an application before. So, it's kind of new territory. Certainly crossed my mind that maybe we should be able to take out any open space or natural area, and there is some, from the formula. But we decided to leave it alone, and trust the city to implement this in a fair way when the time comes. So, I think, as Pete also indicated, this should resolve the concerns to the maximum extent possible in the event that you do see a development application before you have a finally adopted and implemented concept plan. With that, I would be happy to answer questions, as would Phil or either of the consultants behind us.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
I have several speakers signed up. Christine Kozinski first, followed by Tom O'Brien.
My name is Christine Kozinski. I reside in the hamlet of Beaver Creek, and I've been sent here tonight by the hamlet of Beaver Creek in their behalf. They're requesting about six to seven minutes of your time, so that I can read their letter to you.
It's okay. I think we do the same thing in neighborhood associations, so I think we should do a half as well.
We'll give you five, and see if you can do it in five.
I feel that they should have extra time, because they were locked out of the hearings. I'll explain that.
Six minutes, okay? We're good? Okay, sure. Go ahead.
I've left a copy of the letter with Nancy Ide for each of you. Their letter is sent to Mayor Alice Norris and the commission regarding land use applications, ZC 1001 and PZ 1001. Honorable Mayor Norris and City Commission, the hamlet of Beaver Creek enters this letter into the City of Oregon City records and requests that the Oregon City Commission remand the above land use applications to the Oregon City Planning Commission for the purpose of reopening the hearings to public testimony. Our request is based on the following information. The hamlet is enclosing a copy of a notice generated by Oregon City Community Development Planning. The notice is marked mailed July 16, 2010, and describes the hearing on ZC 1001 and PZ 1001 to be held on Monday, August 30 of 2010. However, the notice was mailed from the Oregon City Planning Division to the hamlet, postmarked September 3. Copy enclosed. This notice was received by the hamlet after the planning commission already met on August 30, and approved the land use application for forwarding to the city commission at its next meeting. We draw your attention to the Oregon City Notice of Public Hearing, which states again that it was mailed on July 16 of 2010. In fine print, your notice states, "The application and all documents submitted by or on behalf of the applicant are available for inspection at no cost at the Oregon City Planning Division on Malala Avenue in Oregon City. The staff report with all the applicable approval criteria will also be available for inspection seven days prior to the hearing. Any interested party may testify at the public hearing and/or submit written testimony at or prior to the close of the city commission hearing. Written comments must be received by close of business at City Hall 10 days before the scheduled hearing to be included in the staff report. Written comments received within 10 days of the hearing will be provided to the commission at the hearing." The hamlet of Beaver Creek and its citizens were deprived of inspecting these applications and documents. They were deprived of having the ability to testify at the public hearing and/or submitting written testimony prior to the close of the city commission hearing within your timeframe. They were deprived because they did not receive notice of these hearings. Both city records and the agenda from the city commission meeting of September 15, 2010, clearly show that the above land use applications were brought before the city commission to seek approval for a zone change from the current zoning of FU10 to MUC1 for this 9.59-acre parcel, which is located at 19896 Beaver Creek Road, and is contiguous to the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. When Mayor Norris opened the meeting on September 15, 2010, to citizen comments, Christine Kozinski, a member of the hamlet of Beaver Creek, made comments to the commission and inquired why the hamlet of Beaver Creek was not notified of the hearings in front of the planning commission on their meeting of August 30, 2010. Mrs. Kozinski further commented that there are about 6,500 citizens in Beaver Creek who rely daily on Beaver Creek Road, since this is virtually the only way in and out of Beaver Creek. She further commented that this 9.59-acre parcel is contiguous to the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, and therefore the hamlet should have been notified of these hearings, since the same requirements that apply to the concept plan should apply to this 9.59-acre parcel. She questioned why Oregon City did not recognize this fact, and that she felt the city had ignored 6,500 citizens from having their voices and concerns heard in violation of state land use goal 1. Tony Conkle, a city planner, stated that the city had met the legal requirements of notifying those within 300 feet of the land use application. Then, Mr. Conkle stated to the commission, "Actually, we did send notice to the hamlet. However, this was done however, this was done as an afterthought." Commissioner Neely spoke, asking the Commission to recognize the people of the hamlet of Beaver Creek. Commissioner Neely stated the Commission should not vote on the land use application until their next meeting, allowing the people of Beaver Creek to be heard. The Commission approved, but stated that the hamlet may only bring forth testimony, which was brought before the Planning Commission. The minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of August 30, 2010 state that Chair Powell opened the meeting to public testimony, there being none. Chair Powell closed the meeting to public comments, and subsequently, the Planning Commission approved the land use applications, PZ-1001 and ZC-1001, which were referred on to the City Commission for their next meeting on September 15, 2010. This was a travesty to the people of Beaver Creek. Did the City of Oregon City purposefully ignore the hamlet? Certainly because the hamlet was not timely notified, they now are virtually locked out from giving public testimony since they are confined to testimony only to the comments brought before the Planning Commission for which there were absolutely none. By not allowing the 6,500 people of the hamlet of Beaver Creek to publicly testify, whose primary access in and out of Beaver Creek is on Beaver Creek Road, the City of Oregon City has committed a thoughtless and contemptuous act upon the hamlet of Beaver Creek and has breached the requirements of Goal 1. This land use application is for property that is contiguous to the Beaver Creek Road concept plan. Therefore, the same requirements should apply, and that would be to timely notify the hamlet of Beaver Creek of these hearings. Furthermore, the hamlet goes on record stating that it requests the City of Oregon City send notice of all land use applications which affect its boundaries on both Beaver Creek Road and Highway 213. As development occurs in the future along both of these two major corridors, traffic from the rural areas will become increasingly affected since these are the only two major corridors bringing rural residents into the city, allowing connection to Oregon's major transportation corridor. The safety of these citizens could also become compromised since heavy traffic will slow down response times for fire, police, and ambulances. With the above information, we ask that you honor our request to remand the land use applications, ZC-1001 and PZ-1001, back to the City Planning Commission, appropriately allowing the voices of the citizens of the hamlet of Beaver Creek to be heard. Representing the Board of the Hamlet of Beaver Creek, signed by Christine Kozinski, corresponding secretary and co-speaker for the Hamlet of Beaver Creek.
Thank you. May we ask where our legal options are on this?
Haven't changed since the last time. My understanding was that Mr. Conkle's testimony was that the hamlet was not required to be noticed. Your options are to continue and proceed. You may grant the request. You have no time limitation on the decision in this case, but it is—while you may have a difficulty over this notice, it's not a legal difficulty. And as far as the limitation—the limitation is in the code. No new issues may be raised, and no new facts may be raised. It doesn't say that because nobody testified, nobody can say anything at this point. There were issues and there were facts in the staff report.
Any questions?
The whole application. It was narrative, addressed every approval criteria, there was a transportation report in there. Any of that could have been commented on. To my knowledge, no one from Beaver Creek CPO came up to check or access any of this information. No requests were made to the city, to myself, to Mr. Walter, who I'm aware of, to see this information, to review it, to ask any questions about it. So—and I would reiterate what Mr. Sullivan said, that it's not commenting or rebutting to comments. It's commenting on all of the facts that are in the record. As you're well aware, that is a very extensive correction that we've done, of which a great amount of work has gone into reviewing against approval criteria that are applicable throughout the Oregon City useful code. Got that.
You have a question? Commissioner West?
Well, so, Mr. Sullivan, then—if they did have—or were able to look at it, what value would be in their comments? What comments could we accept? Only—
You could take any comments—again, the factual record is closed when the Planning Commission is closed. But that doesn't terminate the issues. The issues are raised in the application, and they're raised in the staff report. So, they could comment on those issues.
This evening?
I'd also like to remind the— But—I'm sorry, but I thought you couldn't take any more—
You cannot take any new facts.
Any new facts?
Right.
I'd also like to remind the Committee of our noticing requirements, which include posting sites with signs along Beaver Creek Road for every vehicle that passes that site you see. We have issue—we have noticing in the newspaper. We have mailings everywhere in proximity to the site.
Noticing to Citizen Involvement Committee, the affected neighborhood association of which they are in, which is Coffield. We also have it on our website.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to ask questions, Attorney.
Okay. Commissioner Neely.
This is course for first reading. Is it possible to take public testimony before a second reading or not?
It's really up to you. And again, I would reiterate, you're limited on what you can take. You can't take new facts in.
Let's continue then with public testimony, and we'll discuss this as soon as we get into discussion.
I actually wanted to make a point.
Oh, Commissioner Kozinski?
I've raised 227180 on more than one occasion.
180?
227180.
Right, okay.
The Commission call-up provision.
Yes.
Does that provision of law allow us to expand on what we can do as far as evidence?
I don't think so. I think you set out in your ordinance what you want to do. You always have the ability to call up an application. I hear it automatically goes up to you.
So, that doesn't—
Doesn't add anything new, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ryan?
I would like to add just two small things, please. The hamlet of Beaver Creek is Clackamas County's recognized citizen involvement committee for the Beaver Creek area. Saying no to the hamlet of Beaver Creek is the same as saying no to the county. Also, during the urban rural reserve meetings, I believe in one of the last meetings—I believe it was Mayor Norris that went to the meeting with Clackamas County, and I believe Metro was there as well. Oregon City asked to extend its boundaries to Henrissi Road, and I believe it's up to Trinity Lutheran Church. If that's true, then that kind of makes the city and the hamlet kind of kissing cousins in the future, if you would say. So, whatever happens in the city will affect the hamlet in the future.
May I make a comment? I think if we go back, we'll find that the city—when in fact, the urban reserve areas identified by Metro were brought forward to us, I believe we voted unanimously to exclude the Henrissi Road expansion.
Was that done after the meeting with Clackamas County?
Well, I can't answer that question. I'm just talking about a Commission meeting.
What we did here.
What we did here. So, there surely were discussions about expanding it, but when the recommendation came to us, we unanimously voted not to include it as an urban reserve, and I think that's important for you to know.
That's true. I don't think that's true. I think we did include it.
I think—go back.
What?
I believe we did.
We've been down in that area a couple times.
We voted no, but I thought Metro—
Well, that's true. Yeah, it's in.
Metro changed.
It's in, but we voted not to include it. Metro decided to include it.
Okay, let's come back on this topic then. Thank you. Mr. Ryan?
Tom O'Brien, Oregon City. The point that I wanted to bring up is that at the August 30 meeting, the Planning Commission did approve this, but in reviewing their records of discussion that evening, one of the items that was in their agenda packet was a response from the Coffield Creek Neighborhood Association. I didn't see any evidence that that had been considered during discussion, and that's one of the problems that I think we have when we refuse repeatedly to have a full-level commission. There were only four members there that evening. That commission has been lacking two members for almost the past eight years. And I really think that a more balanced commission would have caught some of these things that are going on, and therefore, I would request once again that you do something to full-complement the seven-member Planning Commission. It is your responsibility to appoint those members. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Grazer-Lindsey.
My name is Elizabeth Grazer-Lindsey, and I was also disappointed that this hearing was continued without going back to the Planning Commission and allowing the full participation of the hamlet of Beaver Creek. The last time this issue came before you, I questioned this isolated strip mall. Why would the city not recognize that this was part of a failed model of unsustainable growth based on fossil fuels rather than a new vision? If we look at the newspaper, we see that our national car fleet has been shrinking over the last few years, as well as the number of vehicle miles driven has decreased. The price of oil is creeping upwards. And then, we had the housing bubble popped, and we see empty homes and businesses, including a decrease in the property values in Oregon City. Why would this proposal go forward without the concept plan? The question came up at the last meeting on this about who is running the city? The Commission, the manager, who said that he's neutral, or the staff? The staff is apparently running off of past inertia to push this development despite the Beaver Creek Road concept plan having been rejected by the judge and because of the lack of industry which represents family wage jobs. When I left last time, I ran into the staff huddled up with the developer group. Why doesn't the staff huddle up and strategize and represent the citizens? It occurred to me that the planning staff is afraid of losing their jobs if development stops. I've heard that that happened in Portland and in Clackamas County. So, why doesn't the City Commission direct the staff to work for public subjects such as developing Oregon City's green standards, which came to a standstill when the concept plan failed? How is Oregon City going to respond to the global trends that we hear about? How's it going to move past fossil fuels for energy and transportation? Today on the radio, I heard that the EPA has said that the Boardman Coal Powered Plant, which is the only coal-powered plant in Oregon, is in violation of the Clean Air Act, and they're discussing it being shut down whether in 10 years or before that. How will the city restructure its suburbs to alleviate the need for so many fossil-fuel powered trips? Developing creative new ideas and getting jobs near to people's homes, these are all ways that the staff could be put to work, helping the citizens and not just pushing historical development ideas that aren't current. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who's signed up to testify?
Madam Mayor, if I may. I don't appreciate the unfounded accusations that staff works for developers made by Mrs. Grazer-Lindsey. Our job is to work with an applicant and review that application against the code that's been adopted through lengthy public processes. And if we can come to a recommendation of approval, a recommendation of approval with conditions, or denial, that is what we do. We make the recommendation, and then we bring it forward through not only a Planning Commission public hearing, but a City Commission public hearing. So, I think it's important to note that what we do for the city is implement the code that has been adopted and the vision for this city. And while I appreciate Ms. Grazer-Lindsey bringing forward these issues that she has with larger use of fossil fuels and whatnot, throughout everything you've heard so far, not one approval criteria has been addressed or brought out. And substantial amount of staff time has gone into all of the approval criteria of the municipal code and the Oregon City Comprehensive Plan that we've been able to apply to this application. And I would just point out once again, not one criteria has been brought up.
Thank you.
May I ask a question of Mr. Kleiman or—is it Kenman? Is that right?
Kleiman.
Kleiman and Mr. Kenman?
It's time for them to come up anyway for their rebuttal. So, we'll let them go ahead, please.
Yeah, sure, go ahead with the rebuttal.
Why don't you go ahead with your rebuttal, and then last question.
All right. And this might address your question possibly, Commissioner Neely. I have not heard very much that substantive, and I'm not complaining about that either. And I also want to be very careful not to step on the Commission's dealing with its own procedures in consultation with its council and staff. It's not for me to be demanding or anything like that. But I do want to give you my recollection from September 15. We had hoped and thought you would come to a vote on that occasion, but we heard at somewhat less length the same objections from the hamlet of Beaver Creek, that we have not had our chance. And so, a motion was made to give them a chance by conducting this hearing to comment on the issues raised by the application and the staff report. And several weeks have now elapsed. And as Tony said, those materials have been available, staff has been available, et cetera, et cetera. No one's even gone and looked, to the best of staff's knowledge. So, I really don't quite know what's going on here, but my personal understanding, which I hope jibes with that of the Commissioners, is that the idea last time was to allow that commentary to be provided today, and it hasn't occurred. That's really all I had to say.
Commissioner Neely, you have a question?
Well, the question I was going to ask—you've indicated the issue of your property and the bank, and I appreciate probably an urgency and volunteer. What degree of urgency is in volunteer?
It's very real. We had a—what was it, a five-year loan? And they've written this letter saying that unless we get the zone changed, we're not going to continue the loan.
College?
I'm sorry?
I think specific time.
They wanted—the targeting we had was by October, early November.
And here it is.
Yeah. First of all, I'm going to empathize with the hamlet of Beaver Creek because—
Do you want to close the public hearing first?
Yeah, you can close. The public—yeah, yeah.
Wait. So, is there any further questions of the applicant? All right, thank you. I will close the public hearing, and then the Commission then may begin our deliberations discussion. So, Commissioner Neely, why don't you—
Yeah, I mean, I empathize with the hamlet of Beaver Creek because we have property that is either adjacent or probably adjacent to the area served by the hamlet. And I think we should have a mechanism where—we always have mechanisms where the Associated Neighborhood Association is informed, and I think in this particular area where we've got properties that are abutting the urban growth boundary, which I think is within the hamlet of Beaver Creek, I think they should be notified as well, and I think that should be part of our process. But I'm very sympathetic to the issue that—Mr. Kenman, is that right?
Kenman.
Yeah, thank you. You just work for him. I'm talking to the guy. Anyway, I appreciate that urgency, and my suggestion is that we proceed with the first reading, but we do have the opportunity of a public hearing before the second reading so that the hamlet has the opportunity of addressing specific points in this application.
Yes, I agree, because I'm sympathetic to the fact that this was an opportunity for substantive comments to come forward, so we've had another opportunity. We did delay this. We did, we did delay this in particular. Mr. Sullivan, you're not liking that.
Let me, you can certainly take testimony on issues that were in the application and in the staff report. My discomfort once again is that we get perilously close to new evidence. And you're asking me, or you're asking the applicant to parse words and to separate the wheat from the chaff. Let me suggest to you that there have been a few things that were new that I will assume that you will ignore. And gently, I must say, that the position of the applicant's finances is not a relevant criterion for you. Okay? You have what's on the, on the books, you have it in the staff report, and you've got to go with that. If you wish to take, and I wouldn't call it testimony, I would say comments, because you're not able to, to have new facts, and the issues are laid out again in the staff report and the application, you can take comments on that. I would have hoped that we would have seen that before the night, the time, the date, the minute of the hearing. But, you know, it's really up to you as to how you want to run your procedure. You may do this if you wish.
And, and can we condition it? Can we say that the testimony has to be in?
Yes.
Five days before?
And if you, yes, you can.
Okay. Commissioner West.
Well, I just wanted to respond a little bit to Commissioner Neely's comment on noticing adjacent hamlets or CPOs to our UGB. And I am certainly willing to have that discussion, but I don't think that is something that should be addressed tonight. And if we want to talk about that, maybe we could make a policy at a work session. We could put it on a work session agenda.
Where? I was going to put a motion today.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
That's two separate issues here.
Future policy discussion, I agree.
Yes.
Further comments or a motion?
Well, I'll move for first reading of ordinance number 10-1008, comprehensive plan amendment for future urban designations to MUC, mixed-use corridor designation and a zone change for the 9.6 acre parcel of Land Hook at 1989 six Beaver Creek Road. With the, with the condition that written testimony can be submitted, let's say, seven days prior to the next commission meeting.
That's comment testimony.
That's comment testimony, comment testimony to the application.
And if I may, you want to add the conditions that the staff recommended?
Yes, and I want to add the, the three conditions that the staff recommend. Anything else I want to, is there anything else I want to add?
And Mr. Steinman's letter.
Which are included in the letter. And a second, please.
I'll second it.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. For the first reading, Mr. Sullivan.
If I, if I could just clarify real quick, so...
Sure, you understand?
We are potentially going to have a vote on the first reading of the ordinance. The record is open for additional written comments to be submitted up to seven days prior to the next hearing, which is in seven days. At that hearing, will we be taking public testimony?
Is the intent, yeah, we need to discuss our intent.
I think, I think the only, the only point we might want public information is if we have questions about the comments, and the public can respond to those questions.
So the intent is not to take public testimony?
Not, no, not beyond the written testimony.
Thank you.
Makes it more clear. Now, Mr. Sullivan.
This is ordinance number 10-1008.
Do we vote?
Vote on first and second readings.
No, but I'm saying, do we vote as a full body to ask you to read, or does that only happen after you read it? Because there was a motion and a second, and then you started reading. And I'm just wondering if that's a full decision of the commission or just a movement and a second?
You just to take a vote on whether...
We can do it either way.
We should vote.
Usually what I've done is read it, then you vote.
And then we vote, usually, usually we...
And then you vote on, on whether or not you want to adopt.
Yeah. We usually do it that way. It doesn't matter to me.
I just was trying to clarify. Thank you.
This is ordinance number 10-1008, an ordinance amending a portion of the city's comprehensive plan map from County FU, future urban, to MUC, mixed-use corridor, and Title 17, zoning, Chapter 17.06.030, a portion of the official zoning map of the Oregon City Municipal Code from County FU 10 to MUC-1, mixed-use corridor district, for the property identified as Clackamas County Map 3-2E-10C, tax lot 800. With that added to Exhibit A1 are three additional conditions, five now noted as five, six, and seven. Let me make sure I get the, yeah, Exhibit A1. Number five, if the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan in parentheses, VRCP, closed parentheses, is formally adopted subsequent to approval of the proposed rezoning, as part of any subsequent site plan design review approval, master plan, phase development review, or other appropriate review, the development shall comply with the BCRP and any design and performance standards adopted thereto. Six, if the Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan is not yet adopted at the time the applicant seeks development approval, the applicant's proposal shall be consistent with the intent of the mixed employment village to be transit supportive in its use, mix, density, and design. At a minimum, the overall development site shall achieve an average minimum floor area ratio in parentheses, FAR, closed parentheses, of .25, and a minimum building height of 25 feet or two stories, except for accessory structures or buildings under 1,000 square feet. Number seven, in accordance with OCMC 17.29.070, the required minimum FARs shall be calculated on a project-by-project basis and may include multiple contiguous blocks. In mixed-use developments, residential floor space will be included in the calculations of floor area ratio to determine conformance with minimum FARs. An individual phase of a project approved through the master plan process OCMC 17.65 shall be permitted to develop below the required minimum floor area ratio, provided the applicant demonstrates through covenants applied to the remainder of the site or project, or through other binding legal mechanism, including phase development, that the required density for the project will be achieved at project build-out. There are also other side, side declarations made by the commission that this matter would be continued until the, the next scheduled commission date for a receipt of written comments seven days from today, ending seven days from today. And the commission would consider those comments, but not necessarily any oral testimony, except to respond to questions. Have I got it right?
Yep.
Yes. Thank you. Is there further comment or discussion? Thank you. Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
No.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes, board one.
I feel obligated to make a comment that, in response to one of the people that spoke, and many of the things I think didn't, was not directed to conditions and so forth that were in the application. But I do want to say that a mixed employment village in an area that is a major growth area in terms of residential development and so forth, may in fact have the effect of reducing gas consumption and so forth, where you have in fact economic activities going on, probably including some service activities that would support the neighborhood in general. So I don't think the argument was put forward as necessarily accurate.
I had the same thought. Okay, thank you. Moving on to general business.
Actually, I just wanted to make a comment because I didn't get an opportunity to make my comment before we voted. I just very briefly don't think that this should be put forth until the Concept Plan has been adopted again and can be fairly judged against the Concept Plans. Because I don't know, we don't know what the Concept Plan is ultimately going to look like.
And, and these three conditions don't satisfy that for you?
No.
Okay. Thank you for explaining. Moving on then to general business, we have an opportunity for, to discuss creating an economic improvement district. This is ordinance 10-1009. For the staff report, Mr. Drenlaw.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the commission. This is the first step in creating an economic improvement district for downtown Oregon City. This item was discussed at your work session on September 7th. This is a, a new process for us, and one of the first steps we have to do is to pass an ordinance specifying what's going to be in the next ordinance. So we're going to have actually two ordinances. So the, the one that you see tonight does not establish a district. It only establishes what has to be in the ordinance that you'll see in two weeks on October 20th. And this ordinance, really all it does is specifies that the City Commission, when they do this next ordinance, will meet all the standards in the Oregon revised statutes which relate to the boundaries of the district, the assessment rate, how that money that is raised will be used in a, in a general sense. And, and once that ordinance, the assessment ordinance is, is generated, there will be an opportunity for public input, which again is scheduled for October 20th. Assuming that the commission approves that ordinance on October 20th, then the city clerk, based on the assessment rate, will send out notices to all the people that would potentially be assessed that, that tax. And then there's an opportunity for a second public hearing, which we've scheduled for December 1st. So it's, it's a new process, it's fairly lengthy, but this is the first, first required step. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission?
Okay, I have one.
Commissioner West.
So, Dan, businesses can testify, or businesses, property owners can testify up until December 1st?
Yes, anyone can testify.
Other questions?
I was going to, I was going to make this comment at my reports, but I want to let the commission know that we always talk about notice and how to inform people. And my intent with this new process, because it is partially because it is a new process for our staff to go above and beyond, way beyond what's required in the minimum requirements of the statute to meet with people and inform them. There is going to be a meeting on October 14th for outreach and questions and answers with downtown property owners at Cypress Restaurant, and I will be attending that along with Lloyd Purdy and some of our other staff to answer questions that anyone might have at that meeting.
What time, date?
That will just be one of those.
Do we have a time, Dan?
Noon.
Noon, that's right. So for any of you that would like to join in the fun, I will be...
Is that date and time again?
October 14th at noon at Cypress. And that coincides very directly to Goal Two, to promote economic development, Goal Five, to increase communication with citizens, Goal Six, to maintain fiscal health and long-term financial stability. And I think that's about it on your goals.
Hey, I like that.
Yes, he's a quick study.
Okay, thank you. Is there further comment from the commission, or is there any public comment? A motion, please. Commissioner West.
Oh, I got to find, I move for approval the initial ordinance for introduction number 10-1009, procedures for creating an economic improvement district.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. This is for the first reading, so we will have another, another reading at the next meeting. Mr. Sullivan.
This is ordinance number 10-1009, an ordinance containing procedures for creation of economic improvement districts.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. Now the consent agenda. We will vote on all, all of it, except for the last item, which is the ODOT Transportation Enhancement Funding.
Moved for approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner West, seconded by Commissioner Smith. On the consent agenda, Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. We've pulled off Resolution 10-24 for separate consideration. This is the, asking for City Commission's support for ODOT Transportation Enhancement Funding Request for, is a grant, Downtown Oregon City Connected Corridor Sidewalk Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvement Project. Commissioner Neely, you had questions about this?
Well, we have a budget impact, and I just wanted to inquire whether the $410,000 is in fact what we're applying for.
I know, I have to think.
I just want to make sure she heard me. Surprise.
I don't have my, well, actually, if I could have a minute, I could actually get all of the numbers out of my computer.
We can hold it.
We can hold it over. Is that, is that...
Oh, I need to get it passed, but it would take me not very long to find it.
Yeah, I think the, the concern is if in fact it's, it's money out of the, out of our current, out of our current budget, I think we ought to know that.
It, actually, I think I would really like to find it on my computer because there are details.
Yeah.
I can't tell exactly what it's for. It'll only take me like, do the mayor report or something.
Sure. Why don't we move on to the City Manager's report then?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier at the URC Commission, I had my dates mixed up on the ICMA conference. I reported it would be the 9th and the 13th, but it actually will be the 15th to the 20th. So those will be the dates that I'm away, and I will appoint one of our executive department directors to serve in my absence during that period. Also want to let you know that the county animal code, the consent, request for us to consent, has been reviewed by the city attorney, and it's, it all looks in order. So we'll be placing it on our future agenda, and that ties directly to Goal Four, for livability.
On a work session or a City Commission agenda?
That will not be a work session, it'll just be a commission, a regular commission meeting for adoption. They did make some changes to their animal code. They were mostly housekeeping changes, and we have to consent to the changes every time they make them so that they continue, they can, can continue to have jurisdiction to enforce it in our city. So, and I explained that, I think, in an email to you, but, but it has been reviewed, and it, it all looks fine. So that will be coming up on an upcoming agenda. And I will also begin soon competing, or completing the annual evaluations of our executive team. So that's all I have for tonight.
Right. Nancy, you ready? Not quite yet. Okay. Let's move on then.
filibuster longer.
Scott, Scott is rising, is he?
Oh, did you have, Mr. Archer?
Oh, that's right.
I'm going to mention about our Nancy Bush's certification.
I did miss one, one item. Yes, Scott Archer's going to tell you a little bit about our, our code enforcement officer has reached a, a new high mark in her career with the, with the city of Oregon City, and I'm really pleased about that. We've recognized her internally for that accomplishment. But I want to also mention, and this is sort of an alarming statistic to me, but from March through September, in other words, the last six months, our code enforcement staff has responded to 814 code violation complaints. As of late September, approximately 400 of those are still open cases. And that's, is it three and three-quarters staff, or four?
Four.
Four. So as a former homicide detective, I can tell you 50 cases a month just keeps you buried. These aren't homicides, but they're still, that's, that's an amazing amount of work for four people. So I really appreciate your, your efforts there, Scott. And then he'll tell you a little bit more about Nancy Bush's accomplishment.
So I wanted to let you know that, I'm pleased to let you know that Nancy Bush, our code enforcement manager, who I think you all know, was recently awarded, had recently accomplished the, the items and the certifications and the education necessary to receive the highest level of code enforcement certification in the state of Oregon by the Oregon Code Enforcement Association, which is basically her, her peer organization. The certification program was designed and implemented in 2004. The objectives of the certification are just to basically validate and... The objectives of the certification are just to basically validate and acknowledge a certain level of achievement and training and education and so forth, and professional experience. The, let's see, Ms. Bush is one of only 25 officers, code enforcement staff or officers in the state of Oregon that have received this professional certification, and also there are, I think there are six levels of certification within this program. She achieved the highest level of that. So we're very, very proud of her and very pleased for her, and I think it just bodes well for the city that she's received that recognition from her peers around the state.
Congratulations from all of us.
Thank you.
That's it? Well, there are a couple more things I think we should recognize while we're waiting for Nancy, and one is in her field, and that is that we have received more ARR money, the stimulus Americans for, I've forgotten, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. And we received 267,241 additional dollars over our original 900,000, so this is to complete the Werner Milney project. We have 1.1 million dollars in change now for that project. So thank you, Nancy, and your staff for getting that for us. And then also, you were talking about High Points. We recognized that an elevator operator, Nancy Tunnison, who had, she has her ups and downs. She was actually featured in the Oregon City News, but she was recognized in a very nice little but small ceremony for achieving her 25 years. So she's been working and really being kind of the gateway to Oregon City for all that time. So that's great. And then the, just prior to the meeting tonight, the city commission conducted our six-month performance evaluation on our new city, with our new city manager, and we're pleased to report that he received, met the expectations that we had for him for those first six months. So we'll be, and we recognize that he's still in his transition process, and have determined that we'll work together and move on into the future as we continue to transition and building the relationship. So we're happy about that. Next, you have before you a letter that I sent out previously. I don't see it coming up. See the letter to ODOT?
Oh, the ODOT, is that coming?
It's not coming up.
I have it on mine.
It, she hasn't signed it yet, I don't think.
It's there.
Oh, there it is. I got mine. Okay, this is a letter that I hope you all had a chance to read. I think Nancy and I reported on this after we had met with, Clackamas County met together to talk about the rail study and where will high-speed rail go, which track, which alignment. And so this letter highlights those concerns that Clackamas County wanted to express to ODOT. So you'll see them. Okay, I'm trying to get into it. Just to, these three items particularly, that the decision-making process should highlight transparency and accountability, that counties that will be significantly impacted, such as Clackamas County, be included in the decision-making body, and that the project be managed by a third, experienced third party to bring specific proficiencies to the project that ODOT may not contain within itself. That's a really important, those are, I think, very important to us. Also, one more thing I want to highlight, which I don't see. So anyway, that's, does anyone have any changes in that letter or have any objections to me signing it and sending it out, sending it off? All of the mayors of all the communities in Clackamas County will be asked to put their name to this as soon as we, okay?
No, I think it's a great letter.
There are no objections? We will, we will do that. As you know, Oregon City does have a stake in this game. Okay, next. Someone mentioned the safety fair, it was William. Safety Fair at Danielson's, I think, was great, and I just wanted to commend our building department. I'm not sure that I know they've ever been a part of it before. Do you have?
Yeah, yes, this is, I believe, it's the second and the third year that our building department has worked with Clackamas County as well as Shemekah Community College. We do some training of their students. They come up and work with our building inspectors and plans examiners. So we team with them, and this year we helped permit, site and build 200 birdhouses for kids.
It's great to see them working with kids.
And we had a nice big tractor to compete with the big fire trucks.
Yeah, that was really great. And our police department was there in full force, and the famous camel was there as well.
What's our codes pertinent to birdhouse billing?
We kept them very simple.
And what are the permit fees and all the, how much money?
You had waved them for the kids.
You had a second regress in case the birdhouse catches fire?
We did not.
They're multifamily dwellings, I believe. Also, I have information here, if anyone wants to look at it. I think I'm the only one that went to the tour of the city, that Metro organized, to the city of Vancouver, where we toured their sewage treatment plant, and it's an amazing place. If you haven't driven by it, it's on the waterfront, it's got a lot of similarity to ours, except when you look at it. They call it now a marine park natural resource area. So it's cost-effective, state-of-the-art facility that establishes a new benchmark for odor noise and visual mitigation. It's also, right behind it are some high-end housing units, and they're very happy coexisting. I thought that this comment was very interesting, too. In the age of shrinking land resources, there's no longer the luxury of setting undesirable facilities away from commercial and residential areas. So they have to be good neighbors, and it's a park, it's a, they do stormwater mitigation, water mitigation and catchment. It's just a really wonderful place. So the reason that they had it for us is so that in Clackamas County, as we wrestle with what to do with sewage treatment plants, that this might be a model for us. So anyway, I have the marine park, they have water reclamation facility there, so I have some materials, if anyone wants to look them over. And I would recommend, the public is also invited. They have exhibitory, especially for children, but they also have art in the facility, so anybody can stop by, and it's also on a wonderful path connection as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I had the opportunity of visiting that site when I was a citizen member of the Tri-Cities group, and apparently the functional pieces of the sewer plant are almost identical to Tri-Cities. It's just that it looks so much nicer. And function, I mean, in terms of water treatment and so forth, in terms of wetlands where this water goes to is really great.
Yeah, well, we can definitely learn from them. They're a little bigger than we are, but it was a really interesting tour. I didn't get to stay for the downtown tour, but the Estra Short Park area was also part of the tour, but I didn't get to see that. Also, I really thank Public Works staff and all of those, and Lloyd Purdy, who worked on lighting the elevator purple to remind us all that domestic violence is a huge, huge issue in our community, and I love the purple draped on the posts and the balloons. It really makes our downtown look very spiffy, so that was really nice. Well, several of us went to vehicle registration fee workshop with the county. We haven't come to any conclusions, but there was really a lot of discussion, but did you want to comment on that, David?
Well, I'd just say that preliminarily, my preferred alternative would be the 48-52 split rather than the 60-40 that is the minimum required by statute, and that was.
You want to explain what that is?
Yeah, they're required after 2013 to, to the cities for transportation projects, a minimum of 40% of the amount that's collected per capita. And so because the county split a population between urban and rural is approximately 48 urban and 52 rural, we're suggesting that 48 would be a more appropriate number, and I think that's very reasonable compared to what some cities might have gone in there asking for. But I do think, my take on the group, we split into different groups.
Different tables.
I think there were three or four, and the mayor and I were not in the same group, so we might not have been on the same page.
I think we were.
But we probably were. And so I was in a group with Happy Valley and a couple of other smaller communities, and that was sort of our push. I believe that we are going to have additional workshops, but I just really appreciate the fact that we were sitting there, and at each of our tables, each of the groups that were broken into, there was a county commissioner there, as well as mayors and city managers from the various communities, and the commissioners could interact with us firsthand and hear what some of the concerns were. And I, Ann Lineger was at our table, and I got a very strong impression that she listened extremely carefully, took notes, and was very sensitive to the needs of the cities. So I appreciated that.
Yeah, people had a lot to say. And then my last report is from Impact, Metro Policy Advisory Committee. We are still working on the regional framework plan, and we had so much discussion on the pieces of that, which are, I think they're just being tweaked, they're not substantive changes, but really to make it more equitable, stronger on climate change, stronger on how we're going to use the land for urban, particularly urban development, large lot industrial. But we have not yet, so Wednesday, I believe, we get to talk about the requested changes for town centers, to relocate the Happy Valley Town Center, change the Main Street designation in Coronelius to a town center, and change the Tannisborne Town Center to a regional center for the Amberglan-Tannisborne area. So, and Tony Sitz on MTAC, which has made some recommendations on these. I believe you supported those changes at MTAC.
That's correct, yes.
So that's what we'll be discussing. If you have any comments, make sure that you give them to me before the meeting. Clackamas County is always a very vocal there. We represent, we who represent places in Clackamas County. Now, Nancy, have you found the missing piece?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, it wasn't right off the top of my head.
No problem.
The $410,000 that we would be committing for a local match on this is, let me just get back over to, 40,000 of it would be in-kind, donated, agency staff time, and then $410,000 of it would be from a combination of, there's a fair amount of utility work that would be done in conjunction with the sidewalks, and then we could still spend a small amount of transportation SDCs on a few of the elements of the construction. So the $410,000 would come from other funds, and we wouldn't expect to include these in the budget until fiscal year 2011-12 and 2012-13. So it'd be over the next, not this year, but the following two years, Commissioner.
I just have a simple, I'll move on this, but my request is a simple, and I think anything that's on the consent agenda, if it actually involves expenditure of funds that we currently have, I don't know if this is in any budget we had, probably was not.
No, this is committing future dollars.
Yeah, and my request is that it not be put in the consent agenda when we have a city funding source identified. And with that, I'll move resolution 10-24.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Neely, seconded by Commissioner West. Is there further comment or discussion? Seeing Nancy, the vote, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Nocida?
Aye.
Commissioner Neely?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Mayor Norris?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0. That concludes our business agenda. Is there further reports from commissioners?
I have none tonight.
Commissioner Smith?
I wasn't going to mention this, but I have, it's such a significant piece of Oregon City-Westland history, I have to at least mention part of it.
Okay. Not the game.
Not the game. We won't talk about the game. But we kind of brushed over and kind of forgot about a big milestone that happened this year, and it was the 90th football game between Oregon City and Westland. The outcome of the game, however, we're not discussing. Anyway, so it just seemed like a big milestone. We're 10 years away from a huge one, and I can't wait. That's going to be, the bridge will be done. We hope, we hope.
We want a good city park again.
That'll be a big celebration, and we will win that game.
And that's the oldest football rivalry west of the Mississippi, I think.
Yeah, that's a big deal. And one of the great, and last year I did a lot of research on that, but the first Oregon City-Westland game took place in 1921, but the game would have been in the later part of that school year, 21-22, which was the first year of the bridge. And so the history is pretty incredible. And so the bridge will celebrate its birthday right at the same time, so that'll be exciting. I know this was on the mayor's list, and I'll mention it.
Sir, go ahead.
The homecoming parade is actually tomorrow night, Friday night football, we don't have school in Oregon City Friday, so the football game will be tomorrow night, and if you're driving on Lynn Avenue or Malala, anytime between 5:00 and 6:00.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I'll wave at you from the parade, I'll be my last one to write in as desmayor, so it's always fun to look forward to. Is that it? Commissioner Nocida?
I just have a quick thank you of our public works staff and our city manager for getting a light that I saw driving in tonight on the pole on our lot on 10th Street by the railroad tracks, 10th and Main. I had gotten some concern from some of the employees in the law library of some concern for their safety because it was so dark back there. So it was still light when I drove back, so I'll go and check, see if it actually turns on.
All right? Is that it? We are adjourned.